I'd like to call this meeting to order. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Alec.
Here.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Here.
Ms. Christarfin.
Here.
Mr. Hauser.
Here.
Ms. Sequin.
Here.
Would everybody please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to the November 1st, 2023 Board of Education meeting. I'd like to introduce our group up here. To my right is Board Member Mike Gebhardt. To his right is Board Member Elaine Sequin. I am Greg Elick. To my left is Board Member Annie Christoffin. To her left is Board Member Len Hauser. To his left is our Superintendent Anne Slosch. And all the way down on the end is our Treasurer Colleen Ahold. Okay, first thing today, we very excited to have a presentation, a strategic planning. So who's going to take the lead on that? Hopefully that's on.
Is this on? Am I on?
No.
No.
Are we on?
Yep.
There we go.
We're on.
Thank you.
Great.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight. My name is Vanessa Tay Ayosu. I'm the President of Burgess &amp; Burgess, and I'm here with my colleague Brandon Baker. Also joining us are members of the committee, and we'll introduce them a little bit later in the presentation. So I'll direct you to the screen, and I just realized I don't have the clicker to advance the slides. I probably should have grabbed that. So, Amy, are you going to drive for me? Wonderful. There. So as many of you know, a lot of entities engage in strategic planning to set the goalposts for the future. So our goal for this was to develop a multi-year plan. It used to be you would develop a five-to-10-year strategic plan, and the pace of change is just so quick and so vast and so fast right now that strategic plans for public entities especially are now really condensing to more like two to three years. So we're going to call this a multi-year plan. And it's to make sure that our plan is rooted in sound educational practices first, but also importantly in community expectations. And to make sure we did that, we created a process that involved the community in multiple ways. So we started by interviewing community leaders. We built a list of over 100 leaders that spanned nonprofit, education, parents, civic leaders, and healthcare, higher education, to really gauge what they knew about the Alaria schools, what they believed were the district's priorities, the good points, maybe the, thank you, the additional points where they needed to improve upon. So that became our basis for understanding what the community knew and understood. We also worked with an internal task force with the cabinet members to help make sure that as we were gauging information, learning information, that we were ensuring that it reflected what was actually happening in the district. Because what we understand through the process of talking to community leaders is sometimes people talk without necessarily being fully informed. So it helped us really understand what is happening versus what the community believes is happening. But then really significantly, we built a stakeholder committee, and it was made up of a cross-section of community members, district representatives, parents, there were even students that attended, where we brought them together over a course of a few months in a series of meetings, long meetings, you know, 90-minute meetings, where we shared information about the district, let them understand what was happening now, and then got their perceptions, their input into the future. And some of you were present at some of those meetings. And then to make sure that we were checking back with the greater community and allowing everybody to provide input, we created an online survey that was available to everyone in the district. It was sent out by email, it was on social media, and The Chronicle Telegram also published it for us. So the outcome of the strategic planning process is to come up with big-picture goal statements, big goals that are then supported by initiatives, or sometimes they're called objectives. We also wanted to make sure that we had a system to measure the progress on those goals and those individual objectives with timelines and responsible parties. We also wanted to take a look at the mission and vision and ensure that it still reflected what the district wanted to achieve, and then significantly a way to communicate the process and the outcome to the greater community. So we had a lot of interesting outcomes throughout the process, but when I said that we started the individual depth interviews as the starting point, I just wanted to give you a quick update on what we heard from them. They were really proud of a lot of things about the Alaria schools. They were proud of the facilities, the diversity, the high-quality teachers, the opportunities for kids to participate in various courses and extracurriculars. But they also acknowledged some of the challenges that the district faces: poverty, difficult home conditions, and that those barriers sometimes stood in the way of achieving success, but that there were still a lot of really good achievements that our students were making. There were some concerns in some pockets of the community about equity, especially related to race specifically, or whether students were college or career-bound. And when I say college or career-bound, it sounds like a zero-sum game, but it's not. So some students are on a path directly to college or directly to career, or mix in between. So there was a little bit of a perception that there was a difference in the way students might be led towards different outcomes. They agreed that the most urgent or pressing issues were addressing behavioral and mental health issues, that there were some violence or safety concerns, and that they wanted to make sure that students were learning conflict mediation, and the district was using conflict prevention measures. They also wanted to see parental engagement increased and ensure that we're meeting the needs of a student body that was very diverse, and then bringing in the community to help achieve all of those goals. This is just a quick slide to show all of the names of the people in the community that gave their time. Some of them attended one meeting, some attended all of the meetings. Many of them participated in the online survey process as well, but some of them also participated in the depth interviews. So again, a nice group of folks who gave their time or their attention to the schools over a series of many meetings. So as we got them together, along with the information about the district, you know, the state report card outcomes, the extracurricular activities, the programs that students have available to them, we asked them their feedback on some big questions. We asked them about the major global community trends that we need to make sure our kids are ready for. So what's coming down the horizon? What are the next things that we really need to make sure we're gearing our kids up for? They told us things about the hybrid work setting, the remote work, AI, making sure that we had enough skilled laborers, that technology is now integrated into everything we do, even skilled labor, that we are a global diverse workforce, lots of things that talked about the real difference in how we approach workplace and workforce and looking at a whole person. It used to be that things like mental health and work-life balance weren't really discussed at work, and they are now, especially in large corporations, and that there are students that are working outside of their home to help support their families. So with less parental involvement in schools, the educational environment might be looked upon differently. So these are all of the things that the community group told us were the trends that we need to prepare our students for. So given those trends, what are the skills that we need to be able to operate within those landscapes that we talked about? And your community told us in those groups that they wanted to make sure that kids were ready with the basics, the educational basics: reading, writing, math, verbal communication as well as written communication, how to manage their time, how to discern information that they were receiving online, how do we know what's real and what's not real, and being able to adapt, motivate ourselves internally, go through difficult circumstances and still have perseverance, but also avoid those things that might trip you up like conflicts, real-life skills, how to maintain your home, how to operate a checkbook. But then they talked about things that are a little bit more soft skills, things like ethics, integrity, self-advocacy. Brig and I have been doing this for a long time. I've been doing this for over 20 years. When we were doing strategic planning 15 years ago, you were not seeing these types of outcomes. People really weren't talking about soft skills. They weren't talking about mental health. They weren't talking about adaptability and perseverance. They were talking about very concrete A plus B equals C in community groups. So this really shows a shift in the way our residents, our community, are looking at education. It really is about a bigger picture now than it ever was before. Keeping that in mind, it means that the job of the district is bigger to your residents, you know, to the electorate and the general. So what must our schools have? What must they do? What must they be to be able to be equipped to provide students with those skills? This was the next big thing that these community groups tackled, and they did these in small groups, and they reported out. And I know we're simplifying the results of all of these discussions that took course over many nights, but Brandon came into my office today with a stack of papers and said, "These are all the notes we took from all these meetings. What do you want me to do with them?" And I said, "I want you to show them." So you can see, it looks really nice and concise on a slide, but this represents lots of discussion, lots of internal turmoil sometimes too within the groups. Because it wasn't that every single person agreed on every single one of these priorities for me. It was a lot of people bringing their own point of view into the discussion, which is why you want a good group of community members discussing this over a series of days instead of sitting in a room and saying, "These are my priorities. I'm done." So just having that interplay, that interaction among the residents, really came up with something that we're all very proud of. So when we said, "What must our schools have and do?", I think that these are really thoughtful responses. They wanted to make sure that we were meeting students where they are, that we were bringing to, is that working? Bringing to the students, understanding compassion, to give them the space to be able to be in the right mindset to learn. But they also wanted the district to be an excellent school district, to just achieve or strive to achieve more. They wanted to ensure that you were providing direct support for students' basic needs so that they could be ready to learn. They wanted proactive face-to-face relationships, that engagement, not just with the families around the students, but the community, the larger community. They wanted the district to be accepting adaptable problem solvers, which I thought was really helpful to see, that you're not just asking the students to be adaptable, you're asking the district to also be adaptable to meet students' needs. They wanted to make sure the district was financially stable, that there were the resources available to do all of the things that we're talking about here. Am I on? You hear me now?
Yeah.
There we go. And just in time for me to stop talking, right? But not just the resources to be able to provide quality education, but to also make sure that you could communicate in a timely, responsible, transparent manner to not just parents, but families. And then ensuring that we're addressing the gap in communications, because not everybody receives information the same way. We're all, you know, we always say, information monobrids, you know? All types of things that come up to us. We have to really make sure that we're meeting people, the community at large, where they are too. So we took all of those answers about what the district must do, see, be, have, and broke it into four categories, all of the responses. And what they really wanted to see fit into these boxes pretty well. The overarching one is about mindset, environment, culture, you know, being the kind of place where it's welcoming and where we're just meeting students' needs. But what they wanted to see was the district raising expectations across the board academically, behaviorally, supporting students and families, not just providing education, but making sure we're supporting their basic needs so they're ready to learn, ensuring that there's the resources to do it, and then engaging the community. So in those four big buckets, the red buckets, we had the groups break down into, you know, smaller groups and discuss goal statements for each of those categories. Those goal statements, all of that paper, all of these discussions, pages and pages of data, the outcomes of the online survey ended up being the strategic plan. So seeing these four buckets, we wanted to further prioritize them, and that became the online survey.
Yes, and I'm going to talk a little bit about the online survey. I'm Brandon Baker. I'm a senior consultant at Burgess &amp; Burgess. It's been a pleasure working with this district over the past several months. So with regard to the online survey, our purpose there was to give the greater community an opportunity to get some input on, or some feedback rather, on the input from the committee that you just heard about. So that survey was in the field from May 12th through the 22nd of this year. We got 733 responses, and as Vanessa mentioned, this was promoted via e-newsletters, social media accounts, and some direct outreach primarily from Anne and Amy. And who did we hear from? We heard from 46% of the respondents were parents, 41% were certified and classified staff, and the remainder were a few community members who do not have students currently enrolled, as well as some students themselves. So I'm just going to highlight four responses that are kind of big picture and certainly informed what you're going to see in the strategic plan after this portion of our presentation. So first, this was a question, "Which of the following do you believe to be the best measure of quality of education for a school district?" And as you can see, far and away, the success of current individual students was first place there with 53%. And I really want you guys to absorb this just because we often hear in the media a lot about standardized test scores, the state report card, but this is what our district community is telling us is important to them. How are the current students doing? Did they graduate? And then the students who graduated most recently, how are they doing in college? What's their careers looking like? That's what's important to them. Next, "Do you agree or disagree with the following statement? Alaria graduates leave the schools prepared for the next step, whether that's college, career, military, et cetera?" If you, we look at this kind of in cohorts, so you look at that agreement cohort, strongly agree or somewhat agree, 68% combined. That's really good. That's really strong. The one thing about this that does concern us however, is that 15% of the respondents said they don't know or they're unsure. That points to, you know, a lack of awareness and something that the district will need to work on to better inform the community, and that is going to be a common theme in these next couple of slides here. So next, "For the Alaria City Schools to be as effective as possible, we need to understand the community's perception of our strengths and areas of improvement." So we gave them an opportunity to rate the district's performance in several areas. So these are listed again by cohort. So you combine excellent and good, that's how you get this ranking. So you see the top five here: access to extracurriculars, a combined 75%, that's excellent. Then on down to equitable academic experiences for all, transparent and honest communication to families, safe and welcome environment, and then creating a collaborative environment for teachers and staff. All very good. And then this is the rest of the rankings, so you can kind of see what's bringing up the rear here. And two things really stood out to us. First, you know, at the very bottom there, you've got 44% rating the district poor in terms of addressing the behavioral and discipline problems of students. That's not a big surprise. As we mentioned, we heard about that in our interviews with the community leaders, and then some of our committee members mentioned this as well. The other thing that is a concern though is, again, the amount of people who are unsure about some of these things. I have to say, 21% saying that they are unsure of the financial management, that's quite a lot. 21% saying they're unsure about how we're preparing students for trades, that's more than we'd like to see. So this is something that it's not, you know, directly like a communications director issue, it's not any one principal issue. It's a, this is something that the district is going to have to come together and collaborate on, raising that awareness. And that's why you're going to see in a few slides here that that is going to be a significant part of the strategic plan. And then lastly, "To help us prioritize plans for the future, please tell us which of these topics are the five most important to you?" So hopefully by now you're seeing some symmetry between this slide and some of the previous slides. You know, again, we're testing directly what we heard in the interviews, what our committee did in those exercises. So each respondent got an opportunity to rank their top five out of these dozen, out of the dozen that you see here. And that percentage is basically a weighted score that calculated how often each, how often people put these in their top five. So again, addressing student behavior and discipline, 82% of the people put that in their top five. So you see, that's number one. Teaching values like compassion and empathy, then focusing on educational basics, continually emphasizing high expectations, understanding and nurturing of students' mental health. And then that's a top five, and then right below that is active partnerships with community organizations for student resources. So again, you're, those top ones are what you saw reflected in those boxes, and that's what informs the goals and objectives that our committee members are going to come and inform you about. So I'm going to invite them to come up. We've got Principal Jody Johnson first.
Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening. So this was an exciting opportunity for myself and I'm sure our team members that are here, because we were a part of the work. So to see us be able to sit here and present to you guys our goals is super exciting. So I have Goal One and Goal Two. Goal One states, "We will collaboratively reinforce high-quality expectations for all students. The objectives include: provide students with the developmentally appropriate instruction and tools to ensure skills and learning beyond the educational basics. Objective Two: continue to improve and increase career, college, and character-building opportunities to students at all grade levels. And Objective Three is to communicate, model, and reinforce expected student and staff behaviors utilizing our district matrices. Our second goal states, "We will work collaboratively with our community to reduce educational barriers for students and families," with our objectives being to further develop collaboratively or collaborative partnerships with parents, agencies, and other parties to offer wraparound services to support and communicate the work of meeting students and staff where they are, to ensure equity and access regardless of background and demographics, and to implement an information management and tracking system for data reports."
Good evening. My name is Chris Pineowski. I participated in most of the group sessions with the community members, and I have to tell you, it was very informative. I thought there were a lot of really interesting perspectives that were diverse, and we discussed some things that I would have never thought of, but they were at the top of the list for others. So I thought it was very well done, and I think it probably provided you with some pretty good results. So I've been asked to discuss or read for you Goal Three and Four. So Goal Three is, "We will focus our resources to meet the priorities of our students, families, and community stakeholders. Objective One would be to evaluate and adjust our process to allocate resources on a regular basis. I think doing so will help you adjust for changing needs. Communicate plans and needs to the greater community. Ensure equitable distribution of resources for our pioneer family. And to continue to seek alternative ways to find resources. In my daily job, the more resources we can find, the more opportunity we have for action." And so I think that probably applies to you as well. Goal Number Four, "We will enhance community outreach to broaden our community audience and strengthen Alaria traditions. Objectives would be: ensure varied, clear, timely, and accurate communication; provide opportunities for two-way communication input and feedback; encourage staff to be more visible at community events; and proactively engage alumni. I personally believe that your alumni are probably some of your most valuable advocates and success stories. So if you engage them and you share some of that, you probably can show a lot of students what's possible with an education from this district." I think overall, if I were to summarize Goal Four when I read that, I think it helps you build trust. Open communication, visibility in the community is going to help you build trust, is going to help everybody connect better with the people that are here and understand better what you're trying to accomplish.
Thanks. Hi, my name is Jennifer Starkey at the Alaria Public Library. I also would echo what Chris said, it has been a pleasure to be a part of the conversations. This process has been very much about getting input from the community, and this plan absolutely reflects the conversations that we had in the work sessions. So we're going to end here kind of at the top of the pyramid with the mission and vision. The vision statement is a succinct but audacious overarching goal, what the district is trying to achieve. It's really the North Star, the why and the what, all in one. It's kind of what the entire strategic plan is aiming for. So Burgess worked with the internal task force to develop this language on this, with the visioning exercise, and I can see that it echoes a lot of what the community planning group had discussed as well. The vision is, "We empower all pioneers to reach their goals on the journey to own their future." Succinct and audacious. Where you hear about vision, you also usually hear about mission as well. The mission is the how of achieving the vision. The Strategic Planning Committee recognized in the process that the district already had a very strong set of beliefs that matched with the conversations that have been taking place. So the internal task force has adopted the Beliefs in Action statement, which may look familiar, to operate as a mission statement. This has been in use by the district already. That was developed through the Schleckie Center, which I understand is an organization that works with education leaders to help foster a culture of engagement. But now it will work in concert with the strategic plan to help reach the vision. The beliefs and actions are, "We believe excellence is achieved through a detailed vision, commitment, and moral leadership. We believe all pioneers have a voice in decisions that affect them. We believe learners thrive when school is engaging and personally meaningful."
Great, thank you.
So those volunteers from the committee, I think, did a better job than Brandon and I could because they talked about their personal experience and what it meant to be part of the committee. So you can see how all of that work kind of dovetailed into those goal statements and then those objectives or initiatives. So the next steps, and this part is in progress, and we're working with the internal team to now develop action plans for each objective. And I'll give you one example. We've already created a process for Goal Two, Objective Two, working to ensure that we're meeting students where they are when it comes to equity. So that process is already now starting as a separate committee of work. So all of the objectives will have something that's appropriate for those objectives. They might not all need separate committees, but some of them will, and that is the process that's going to take place over the next few months. And the idea is to make sure that we have an accountability tracking mechanism for each of those action plans to get to those objectives. We'll make sure that there is a team or an owner for each of those goals with timelines and dates for completion, and that there are regular reports, not just to the Board of Education, but to the community. And then I just realized that there's one part missing, and it's back to the committee. I want to make sure that the committee can now connect their work to the outcomes of the district. And Brandon, please join me in case the board has other questions that we can answer for you. And again, we appreciate the opportunity to do this. We really enjoyed the process. Anytime we can come back to Alaria and work with the residents to have such a strong work product, we're really happy to do it. So thank you again.
Okay, wonderful. I'll start off here. I'm very curious on how successful you were at getting students involved in getting information from the students.
So students, there were three students that attended most of the meetings, so they were part of the community process. So they provided quite a bit of feedback, and I remember Len was in a group with Orin? No. Odin. Odin. With Odin, sorry. And they were really open and very frank about their experiences, sometimes so frank that it kind of stopped the conversation and we had to kind of redirect. But they were really open in discussing things. And again, they were some of the cohort of the online And again, they were some of the cohort of the online surveys. So they did provide quite a bit of feedback. They had multiple opportunities to provide feedback, and we did hear from them.
Okay.
They weren't shy.
Good.
At all.
And those were, I'm assuming, high school students?
High school students.
Okay.
Other questions?
Did we, did we have any, like, recent graduates?
Many of the people in the room were alum. I don't know how recent, and I, I didn't ask what year they graduated, but some of them looked youthful and sprightly. So I would guess that some of them were pretty recent. I mean, Chris just graduated last year, right? But there, there, it was a diverse group of, you know, ages. So I, I would assume that many of them were pretty recent graduates.
So, so moving forward, after you define the action plans, give us a little bit of what type of monitoring goes on after that to make sure these action plans are successful here.
So this is part of the process that, that we'll build with the internal task force. How do you measure success? How do you individually see, okay, I like this action plan, it's working, or it's not working, and now we need, need to make adjustments? Some districts do quarterly updates to the board, so it'll be a specific item in a strategic, or in the board agenda, strategic plan update, and then we'll update on individual goals or action plans for each of the objectives. Some do this on a regular, every single board meeting. There's one component of the action, of the strategic plan that's discussed in depth. So it really is an iterative process that we need to build with the internal task force, and based on what your expectations might be. Some of these you're going to be able to-
It just seems like so many strategic plans, you know, get done, and then they kind of sit out there, and there's not a lot of follow-up and monitoring. You really lose that value of all the work that's gone into it. And we don't, definitely do not want that to happen.
Yeah, and that can be a little frustrating for, you know, us sometimes too. Sometimes they create these dashboards that you can go online and see the pro, like, you know, the little progress line that goes from green to yellow to red, you know, to see how things are moving on individual action plans. But I, I think it's important to make sure that we understand that some of these things are going to be achievable. They're probably already in process and ready to be done in a year, and some of these are ongoing projects. You're never, ever, 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 ever going to have, you know, like, world peace, right? And some of these items do feel a little bit like world peace. So it really is to make sure that we're constantly, what's the word I'm looking for? Working toward it. Maybe not ever achieve it, but always making the good effort to work at it. And so sometimes that's harder to measure. But, and, and because I mentioned before, you know, 10, 15 years ago, we weren't talking about soft things like mental health. How do you measure that? How do you measure that you've achieved it? Well, you measure it by making sure that the resources are there, that you're adapting to the, the changing needs of the district. But you can't really ever say, check, I'm done doing that. So it really is about building something with your internal task force that meets your expectations as well. And it's, it's harder to do. I'm, I'm going to be really honest. It was a lot easier when it was dashboards that say, you know, we went up two points on the, you know, math scores for seventh graders.
Sure.
That's not what this looks like anymore.
Right, right. So, Madam Superintendent, if you can put that on your list, the two do's, like you don't have enough. But I, I think obviously, once these action plans are in place, that it's going to be crucial that the board has some sort of data on the monitoring side. And I don't know if we need it every meeting, but I would assume at least quarterly, so.
Quarterly is probably right.
Right. So, okay. Do you have handouts? I mean, do you have these and?
Oh, the-
The presentation.
The presentation printed?
Just a-
I can, I, yeah, I did not bring those with me.
Have them to digest it a little more.
See, we, we were, um, one of the objectives was to go paperless, just kidding. It was not, but yes, we'll make sure-
You know, one other question. Brandon, when you were doing your information on the percentages, I would be very interested, do you have the ability to give us that information as compared to comparable districts on how their information came out compared to us? Because it, it's kind of hard to understand it without knowing what other districts are, are doing and, and how they come in. I don't know if you'd have to look at your plans that you've done or how you would get this information together.
Well, I, I would say that we have worked with several other districts on this kind of thing. Not all of them will be comparable to you based on size and demographics and things like that. But we can provide you a, a sample of, are there, are there specific questions that you're looking for? Or just the whole?
Well, my, my concern is your concern that you brought up about unsure on a lot of those responses. So I'd like to know what other districts, is it that we're not trumpeting our horn enough? Why, why is the community so unsure on, on these questions?
Yeah, we'll certainly provide that for you.
Okay, great.
I think it's a really good question, and I think contextually, people pay attention to what they need to pay attention to in that moment. So they'll say things like, I'm unsure on your financial management, because frankly, you haven't been on the ballot lately. When you're on the ballot, that question is a completely different outcome. Like, North Olmsted, we did that right after they passed the ballot issue. So when we asked them about financial management, they had very specific, you know, knowledge about it because they spent months talking about their financial situation. So some of it is really like where you are in the continuum.
Sure. Okay, sounds good. Any other questions or comments?
I just, I wanted to make a comment on, is it Brandon?
Yes.
The statement that you made about the fact that both Amy and everyone was doing a great job on enlightening the community and getting all of our information out. But I guess it goes along with what you just said, is when people hear certain things, it affects them exactly to their moment. So how do we get to the small wins of what's most important at that time? I guess we will monitor that as we go along, is what you're telling us?
Yeah, absolutely.
That's what I was, I thought I was hearing from.
But also, you'll see it when they see your work reflecting what they said they valued. You know, when they say that it's important to make sure that you're addressing equity, and then they hear that you're addressing equity, then suddenly that is going to change their perception, but also they're going to start paying a little bit more attention. If you care about what I care about, then I'm, I'm in.
There you go.
And I think you'll see that, that's part of why we do this, this way.
Wonderful, yeah, yeah.
Outstanding. All right, any other questions or comments? Well, I think this has been very informative, very exciting about the opportunity based on this. We appreciate Vanessa, Brandon, the whole committee that's involved. Thank you very much, and we really look forward to continuing on, on the strategic plan and, and seeing where we can get with, with all this information. We appreciate it, so.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, that was very exciting. We'll get to, down to business now. I believe we do not have any speakers today, correct?
Correct.
So we'll move along to the Board of Education. The minutes for the October 18th, 2023 meeting have been posted. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion by Board Member Karstoffen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Gabhart. Any questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Gabhart?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye.
Mr. Alec?
Aye, motion carries. Madam Treasurer, you have action items for us this evening.
I do. I have a couple of purchase orders to approve, to comply with the district's purchasing procedures. And then I also have to acknowledge the following gifts and donations. We had the Thomas family and the We, We Care Closet. They donated to the Hamilton Elementary. We also had the VFW, Post 1079, Post 8686, and 7035. They did donations to the Junior RFTC, and the KNG Fashion Superstore donated for the senior prom.
Okay.
That's good.
Wonderful. Do I have a motion to approve the treasurer action items?
So moved.
I have a motion by Board Member Seigwin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Hauser. Any comments or questions? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Gabhart?
Aye.
Mr. Alec?
Aye, motion carries. Okay, you have one other item for us this evening.
I do. We have an expulsion hearing to appoint Len and Mr. Hauser and Ms. Karstoffen as the primary representatives.
Okay, and then the other three as alternatives. All right, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Board Member Gabhart. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Seigwin. Comments or questions? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gabhart?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Alec?
Aye, motion carries. And Madam Treasurer, do you have any other reports for us this evening?
I just have a small report. The last board meeting, we passed the first resolution for the two renewal levies that will be on the March ballot. And then the next board meeting, we'll have the second resolution to be passed.
Great. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving along on the agenda, we have a couple of action items. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you so much. First of all, to approve the City of North Olmsted Swim Lane Use Agreement, we're sharing with other districts for the Aleria High Swim Team.
Oh, okay.
And that is it for my action items.
Guess we only have one action item.
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the superintendent's action item?
So moved.
I have a motion by Board Member Karstoffen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Seigwin. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question. Why are we moving? Were we at the?
It, it was a variety of things, but mostly the times we could use it, the cost and everything. It was a good move, and the new coach, I think, has a, a relationship out there that will help us.
Okay.
The price looked really good.
Yes, it was.
Really, really good.
That's the help.
Right. And isn't there a number of schools out at Oberlin also to make?
Yes, and it was getting hard to get times that we wanted. We try to make it easy for students so they can still study and-
Sure.
Work.
Okay, sounds good. All right, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye.
Mr. Gabhart?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Alec?
Aye, motion carries. Madam Superintendent, do you have personnel action items for us this evening?
I do, and I, I have an introduction at the end. But first of all, we have a retirement of a certified staff member, 36 years. Mary Ellis, she teaches language arts at Eastern Heights. She used to be at Northwood before that. Also to approve the following game workers, as listed below. To approve the appointment of the following certified staff as substitutes. To approve the following athletic supplemental contracts. To approve the resignation of the following supplemental contract. To approve the resignation of the following classified administrator. To approve the appointment of the following classified staff. And that concludes my personnel action items.
Do I have a motion to approve the superintendent's personnel action items?
So moved.
I have a motion by Board Member Gabhart. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Hauser. Comments and questions? Quick question, Mr. Burnett, is he a full-time assistant coach?
He is, um, hold on, I gotta look at this. I believe he is.
Okay.
I believe he is this year. Last year, he was not. But it's a 50%, so he's splitting it with someone else, which allows them, like, if he wanted to go see his son wrestle, he could.
So he's still going to be pretty involved with the program?
Absolutely.
Good, okay. Other questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gabhart?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye.
Mr. Alec?
Aye, motion carries. And we have an introduction today?
Well, first of all, I did want to thank Dwayne Whitley for getting us started, shall I say, in our safety department. He's going on to the police academy to train young police cadets out at the college. And he told me when he first got here, there was only one job he'd ever leave us for, and what do you know, that opened up. We tried to, tried to put him in jail back in that office somewhere, but it didn't work. But we do appreciate it, and I, we know he'll always be here if we need him.
Great.
And then I'd also like to introduce Daphne Fuentes-Yost?
Fuentes-Yost.
I got it, all right, somewhat. She is, we actually had a retirement over at the high school, Ilah Solchan, and Alana Wren is moving to that position. And Daphne did a phenomenal job subbing for us. So I know Jody and her team loved her performance and, and are welcoming, welcoming her to the team. So welcome to the Pioneer Family.
Welcome.
And then if you'd like, I can go right into my report.
Please do.
Um, first of all, a great trunk-or-treat yesterday at the high school. I love to see the, the, all the groups dress up their trunks and give out candy. And we even had a Johnson &amp; Johnson sighting. That was so creative. James Johnson and Jody, they were a powder? Powder. I loved it. Amy put together a, a musical slideshow of all the staff. I will tell you, the staff outdid themselves this year as far as dressing up. That is not, I'm not that creative and that kind of stuff, but they did a phenomenal job, and the students were so excited.
What did the superintendent dress up as?
I was a boring superintendent, and, no, skeleton, we were skeleton glasses, and yes, we weren't, we were not as exciting, unfortunately, this year. We did a much better job last year. Also, on Saturday, the chili cook-off at Westwood at 5:00 PM. I am returning as a judge and will be eating Tums for the weekend. Had an opportunity today, you know, Chris, Chris talked about engaging the alumni, and I think I talked to a whole room of alumni. And I won't, won't say what year, but it was way before I was, uh, graduated or went to Aleria Schools. The men's fellowship over at Aleria Baptist Church, there were about 30 or 40 that we talked to today, and it was a, a great meeting and loved talking to them. We're starting our kind of road trip of talking to some of the community groups, and we had a great time. Also, we have Professional Development Day coming up on Tuesday. I know that Natalie Matthews' team and also Denise Blatt's team, as well as a lot of our teachers and principals are presenting this year. It's going to, going to be really exciting, and we thank all of them for putting it together. A lot of work goes into that, and, exciting. And I do want to give a shout-out to Mr. Evan Broski out there.[1721.06]